Meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. We'll call this first.
Ms. Hope?
Here.
Mrs. DePew?
Here.
Mrs. Iker?
Here.
Mr. Teddy?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Zibrowski?
Here.
Mr. Beattie?
Here.
Ms. Verdowak?
Here.
Mr. Kerman?
Here.
And Mr. Russmichael?
Here.
Thank you. Welcome.
First, we have on our list, uh, Morton Switzer. Stand in state of the name and address, please.
Okay, uh, Morton Switzer, twelve thirty, Brown, Pittsburgh, PA, one five two three six. In over forty years in Whitehall, I've attended two council meetings. In the last month, I've attended two council meetings. I'm here tonight, first of all, I want to thank the eight elected officials that are here today. Anybody that puts their name on the ballot, I have great respect for. And I've supported almost everybody up on this stage. Bill Veat, Linda Book, Republicans, voter free every time you're on the ballot. I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican. I know you guys want to do a good job, but you cannot advocate your responsibility to bureaucrats. I'm here because people aren't doing their job. It's as simple as that. Now, I called John Palmieri, the, uh, council, uh,
County Councilman from the sixth district about six weeks ago,
because as I've talked about this water problem that starts on Bronsville Road, goes to West Club, shoots down a ridiculous contraption that the borough did an easement with years ago. Now you own it, you have to take care of it, and you're not. And then splashes all the water all over Charlemagne. So about six weeks ago, John met with the county, and I, somehow my invitation got lost in the mail. And they go, nah, there's nothing we can do, it's not our problem, blah, blah, blah. Okay. I said to John, John, set up a second meeting, and I will be there. We set up the second meeting, today had a third meeting. Because of my effervescent personality and my mild-mannered way that I have about myself, there will be a storm sewer put on Bronsville Road to catch the water coming from Bronsville, which is a county road, that, I was up there last night in the pouring rain. The water comes down Bronsville Road, it has that, um, you know, the, uh, the edge, you know, the curb or whatever, and it curves right into West Club, goes all the way down West Club. That's problem number one. It will be solved within one month. Okay? Because of John Palmieri and because of, uh,
So one day with your initial comments.
Okay, well, thank you. Nah, that's okay. Now, the second problem is this ridiculous contraption of an easement that is, that starts on West Club. I call it a, um, it looks like a, a slippy slide at a water park. That's the easiest problem to solve of the three. But yet, three road crew guys went out there for twenty minutes to a half hour, did a little bit of work, and got out of there. Listen, put me in charge, I'll charge you one dollar. Put me in charge of the whole thing. Give me a couple guys, a dump truck, and it's gonna take a couple days to clean that out correctly. There's all kind of vegetation, there's dead trees, all that has to be removed. It needs to be weed whacked, it needs to be power washed. I don't know about throwing more asphalt or not, whatever. But that's still a temporary solution to the problem. The third and the biggest, uh, triangle here is West Club itself. Everybody says, well, it's a private word, it's a public word, is it? Listen, the, the police give tickets out on West Club. So therefore, it's a public road. You guys shovel-
Your, your initial three minutes.
Yeah, I'm not done.
Well, so Marty-
Uh, to-
You know, we only have to abide by the rules here.
Wait, there's many such, wait, sir.
There's a lot of people that want to talk.
Okay, I know.
Just spit out.
Okay.
Well, you know, this is the rules here.
You guys shovel snow on West Club-
I would like to say I will be happy to give him my time.
Point of order.
Okay, you know, a lot of order here.
Uh, okay, let me, let me just finish off.
Please, you know, you have to-
It's, it's a public road.
Your time's up, Marty.
You know what, I know, I won't be back, I won't be back if I have to.
Okay.
Till the day I drop, yeah, till this problem is solved. And if you had an administration that had the will to do their job, I wouldn't have to be here.
Okay, Marty, they're doing their job.
They're not doing their job, or I wouldn't be here.
All right.
And you know damn well I'm right.
True.
So we're gonna go next to Lori Bickel.
Last is continued, we're gonna go-
Now, I have a second point that I didn't-
Lori Bickel, nineteen West Club Drive. I'm the house that has the asphalt, and when I was here last time, I thought the asphalt was gonna remove. That's what I thought the consensus was on this board. It's still two and a half feet tall, thirty foot long, it is still there. The borough people came in for twenty minutes, a half an hour, to clean something, it wasn't even long, because my husband keeps up with it. He's angry that he has to do their job. Okay? I want, we want that thirty foot monstrosity out of our property that you put in without our permission, without our knowledge. The storm sewer is covered up at the very top by Carl Shoemaker, our neighbor, covered it up with asphalt. That needs to be opened up. Take all that stuff out, that's what he just said. And that asphalt's gotta go. Put a new pipe down there, and a new, uh, another catch basin at the Currie. It will take care of the problem. Fourth meeting, twenty-four years living here, I'm still dealing with the same stupid problem. We're sick of it. Again, last time, the mayor talks to my husband, he doesn't say to Ross, hey, we're having a meeting on Wednesday, maybe you switch your days around. No, nothing. Behind the scenes, what's really going on, people? Yes, it is a public road. When you're giving me a ticket for parking? Yes, when you're, the removal, which he couldn't say. This is ridiculous, people. Fourth meeting, same problem. Come on. Do people understand what I'm saying? Everybody's upset with this, this community. I'm here in office, I was fine when I came in, I'm sitting in front of the building, people are talking about the problems and what's behind the scenes going on here. This is ridiculous. I want that monstrosity out of my property. We didn't put it in. Get a dump truck, get a Dino, whatever you gotta get, and get it out of there. Where's Carl Shoemaker tonight? I don't see him. Who gives him the right to cover up a, uh, catch basin like that? Somebody better check into it. Thank you.
Lori, since you mentioned my name, I was there to help Pat, and as a bitch, if, uh, Russ, he'd asked me, when is the next meeting? Of course I would've told him.
But you should've just told him that, Mayor, I asked, I talked about this last time.
Okay, alright, okay, alright.
I know you're upset about this, but it's important to him.
Didn't occur to me to tell him, but I, I-
You know, I don't think it's up to the person to say, hey, Mayor, when's the next meeting? Mayor should've said, hey, our meeting's coming up on Wednesday, it wasn't like it was three weeks from now, it was in a few days.
Okay, alright, well, I'll remember that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Alright, next we have Jay Kirk, just stand in state of the name and address.
Hi, I'm Jay Kirk, I live at forty-five thirty-five Country Club Drive in Whitehall, one five two three six, for the past eighteen years. I'm here to support my neighbors in the, the water crisis, and I use the word lightly, because it just hasn't been fixed for a number of years. I would like to know, for our quarterly twenty-four dollars for this, uh, for the rain runoff, where is that money going? And if it's escrow, why can't the problem at my friend Pat's house be rectified?
Everyone speaks, but none of you have a response. Well, no, because I can't talk back and forth, because we're gonna address these, uh, details and facts after everyone speaks.
Yeah, but we did discuss-
Sylvia Malvahill?
Who is it?
Sylvia Malvahill?
Madam President, there are people outside the door.
There's seats in the thing.
No, no, it's nearby.
Yeah, there's seats in here.
I'm Sylvia Malvahill.
You wanna sit down, there are seats here, because I didn't see them on behalf of these people there.
I live at forty-six sixty-seven Prairie Road, two doors down from Pat. I've been there for fifty years, and Pat was there when I get, when I got there. At first, um, the gully was okay. In my estimation, that was a natural gully that went from Brown's, uh, the, the street above us is, is Club Drive, and it unfortunately goes straight downhill to the top of our properties. And the water comes straight downhill. And so I think there was a natural gully right there at the edge of Pat's property. And it had been amended, I think with concrete. I think they should've left it alone, and it would probably still be good. But at this point, um, it is now filled with very large things, concrete and asphalt, and it doesn't take any, you can't even see it. You can't even tell where the water's supposed to go. I know water finds the lowest, the lowest place, but I think that water can't even find the lowest place anymore. And so it comes all over into Pat's yard and into her basement, and that's gonna ruin her house, that's a very bad thing to have water in your basement. And, um, it, that was a natural gully, I think, to start with, before they tampered with it. But now that they did, you have to get all this stuff out. Maybe if I just leave it open like naturally.
I know water in my basement, too.
There probably was a way to get water from Club Drive, top of the hill to the down, bottom of the hill. And that's what I, but, but at this point, it's not working, it needs help.
Thank you for your comments. Brian Rampolo?
Yeah, Brian Rampolo, two twenty-two Southview. I'm also here to support Pat. I don't think I can add much to what has been said. I commend Marty for getting the county involved, get that catch basin there, which I understand will fix some of the problem. There's still gonna be water on West Club going down the hill. I was there last night, little ten-minute rain, and there was a river coming down that, um, the asphalt paved culvert. But halfway down, it went through these two massive rusty pipes, I have no idea what they're there for, uh, settled at a low point, and was pouring into Pat's yard, within ten minutes flooded. So that needs to be fixed. This is a ge- a generic problem. Water running off a borough road onto a borough residence property. Forget the road, forget the resident, forget the yard, this is a borough problem, it needs to be fixed. And it can be, someone said, it can be fixed so easily. You've got a natural gully there, you've got gravity on your side, and you have a drain right down at the bottom. It's a no-brainer. Get your engineer to come up with something, I'm sure it can be done, uh, cheaply, uh, cost-effectively, and fix the problem. Don't keep waiting for people to tell you to fix a problem, that's the borough's problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, bye.
I'm sorry.
Addressing issues of the, of the White House so far?
We can't, you wanna do it, is that, is that all it's?
If you're already talking about my comments, and we can't hear you, we need to be able to hear you.
No, I was asking, uh, we could wait, we'll just finish the last-
Why didn't, yeah, why didn't you hear all the comments?
I'll just, yeah, because there is filter. Um, sorry, was this, was that Cheryl Schubler?
Well, that's me.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Uh, your name and address, please.
Good evening, Cheryl Schubler, four eighty-seven Baptist Road, I've lived there for twenty-two years. Um, of course I support Pat, but I'm gonna give you guys a break and not tell you about that. I, I came, I came here about another issue that's been bothering me. I've sat in two council meetings here, and I hear a certain council member being lambasted for doing something that she was voted to do. The reason why three new people ended up on council is because what I have heard from the majority voters is people've had it. We wanted new blood on this council. And it wasn't the fact that Phil R., anybody, I like Phil R., it wasn't because of that. It was the fact that nothing was getting done. And to hear somebody come repeatedly, for the past two meetings that I've been to, and to lambaste somebody because they are being transparent, is what she was elected on. Beth Lynn Iker promised transparency. That's what we want, that's what the residents of Whitehall Borough want, we want transparency. As far as that goes about the right to knows, I requested a right to know also, it just wasn't Beth Lynn. My re- right to know, I filed it on February twenty-first. I am still waiting to hear back from one of them, okay? I heard back from one, I paid for it, um, paid for garbage, some of it was garbage. And the other one, half of it was denied. For Doverdale, it was denied. I am a member of the Bald Rumor Man Association, I was an officer of that Bald Rumor Man Association. I was very involved in all that. I would like to see those records before they are destroyed. I am denied half of them. I was told then, by Ms. Worts, that I could file an appeal. I filed an appeal, I was told by the appeal from Harrisburg that my appeal was denied, because I had five days, five business days for my original appeal, to basically appeal it. Now, how could I appeal something that I didn't even know was gonna be denied? Because I was trying to be nice, I was trying to be patient. I don't think the problem is anybody in council requesting right to know, or myself requesting right to know. I think the problem is, is the way these right to, these records are being kept. Perhaps they need to look at a policy, the policy where the right to knows are filed appropriately when people go to file. This is not the first time I tried to get a right to know. I tried to get a right to know as the president of Bald Rumor Man Association. It was like pulling, I'd rather have a tooth pulled than to file a right to know, that's how painful it is. These are public records that we, the people of Whitehall Borough, are entitled to. And it is an awful, awful process.
So, you're, you're good? So, public, I mean, again, the right to know law exists to allow the public to-
Yeah.
-obtain public documents.
Uh-huh.
And that's, that's how it's set up.
It's always a deny, always, always, always a delay, always a delay. And if they're telling me now-
Well, ma'am, let the listeners-
I'm sorry.
-first.
I don't want to address, you know, again, publicly, I don't, you know, you've gotten an appeal pending, potentially an appeal in the court, you need to appeal from the decision from the Office of Open Records, let's really get into that specifically. But, you know, the, the design of the Office of the Right to Know Law is just that, to allow the public to request documents. Now, what the Act understands is that every document is not the only thing that the staff does, right? So, there's a built-in setup for an extension of time to do that, and if the request is such, it takes additional time, that information is provided to the applicant, and says that they, they, it's gonna go beyond that, right? Because beyond that initial thirty days, you have a right, the boroughs are ready for the initial thirty-day extension. Beyond that, it's, you know, the, the, a person requesting it wouldn't have to accept it necessarily, but based on the circumstances, they can.
I was, I was being polite, I've learned, I've learned, I'll be polite and more.
Well, you know, and then part of the, you know, items that are, there are a list of, except, you know, documents are presumed to be public unless there's an exception, that per, per, includes them from being released. So, and one example, our attorney-client privileged documents, right? If there's legal advice given by an attorney to the borough, that's not a public document, right? If there's information that contains personal information, people's social security numbers, things like that, that's obviously, you know, people's home addresses, those are, those are exempt. So, within the denial that when, you said the documents were granted, all the items that were public documents were granted, the ones that were not were, you know, presumably exempted. I don't believe it's, maybe it's half in terms of the words on the page.
It's just half.
But, but not in terms of the documents, there's documents available, I understand they've been available.
Correct, so, I mean, Ms. Schubler, if you're comfortable, I'm happy to talk about your specific information, the data.
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
So, yes, you did file a right to know, uh, your first right to know, the thirty, thirty-day extension was, uh, given on February twenty-eighth. There have been subsequent extensions, uh, every thirty days, until the most recent one on June twenty-eighth. Um, you were given, and you did provide payment for one of the three files that you did request, that was-
Right, right.
And that was on May twenty-eighth, according to my records here. Uh, your most recent payment demand letter for the other two files that were sent, yes, that was sent on July seventeenth. That payment was due today, actually, we have not received that, but the files are available, once payment is provided, we will make copies.
Marty, real quick.
Oh, Ms. Hope, thank you. An elected official, I've never heard in my, and, and I've been around a long time, I've never heard that a public official, an elected official, has to file a right to know for information, and then subsequently pay for it. It's outrageous, it's outrageous, the rudeness, the rudeness that has been shown to Beth Lynn by people in this audience who are bullies.
No, okay, you know what?
Go ahead, go ahead, sir, answer that question.
Well, well, you know, again, right? I don't, I don't know about any other community, like the Borough of Whitehall. Councilman Donovan Power is an individual councilman. It takes four members of council to act on the happen of Borough of Whitehall. Councilman's a councilman, the same as any other person, so there's three hundred people, right? Okay. So, when there is information that the borough council desires, Ms. Worts, or Mr. Russmichael, or Mr. Gillette, or whatever, they provide the borough council as a group with whatever documents they need. If there's an individual councilman that wants documents that the, the other members of council don't think are necessary, then that's an individual's request, and so that takes time. As far as paying for documents, that's a choice that's made by an individual, because you're certainly allowed to come in and inspect documents and take pictures of whatever you want, but if you actually want copies made, there's a cost of making copies that the borough passes on further. If there's items that have to get redacted, and the borough doesn't have any legislative, they have to make a copy to redact it, there's a cost. That's the right to know rules, and that's where it comes in.
I understand, but on the school board, whether I like the member or not, not one time did any school board member ask for information that they didn't receive within the next couple days. For, the right to know for an elected official-
It's balloon, it's-
It's forty-five boxes worth of information, it's meant for the garbage area. I'm not a bully, I'm not talking to you.
Alright, please, you know what?
We didn't talk to you either.
Put her in a room, let her look at the damn documents.
You know what, yes, well, she'll be in there for a year.
I don't care, later there.
Well, that's right, she could, so, you know, she could do that.
That, that wasn't a request.
But, yeah, she wanted copies, and that's what she was paying for, and also five thousand dollars' worth of Borough employee time.
Excuse me, I was told that I was being disruptive. Whenever I questioned the fact of the matter, that the staff, uh, was adamant, was adamant that I was not allowed to photograph or make any copies whatsoever.
Solicitors have-
We talked, no, the, the issue was making copies of copyrighted material. The rest of the copies that were not copyrighted material, you were free to make copies.
Uh, I, uh, and my associate who came in with me that day were demanded to, to erase our entire phones before we could proceed with our right to know, and it was under grand duress that I had switched to, um, the, uh, photocopy. Because it was my preference to be able to scan the documents that were not subject to copyright of, within the time allotted. Moreover, even a stack of the papers that were presented to me was not at all permitted to be photographed.
To be clear, the initial request was to view the documents, which arrangements were made. There, photographing was not, nothing was-
You can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
You can't hear you.
So, the original request was to view the documents. Time was set up with, with Mrs. Iker and staff to monitor this, so that she could view them. They were not screened for copyrighted material, because at that point, Mrs. Iker had given no indication that she would be photographing. So, there, the, the issue of photographing was new at that instant. Given that information, staff let her know that she couldn't photograph things, because it had not been reviewed for copyright. Once it had been reviewed for copyright, she would have been permitted to take photos. Mrs. Iker at that point modified her request for copies. So, staff then took that request, modification request in writing, to go through them and provide a price for payment of physical copies. And that is what we've been doing thus far for that request.
I have a quick question. It's been under duress, that is on the, underway, alright, you may understand.
Can we get back to that?
Can I ask a quick question about the documents, real quick, please?
Real quick, please.
Um, I'm, so you said she may not be able to take pictures of certain documents. Why aren't the quote-unquote confidential documents kept separately, that she could just photocopy?
No, it's not a matter of com- confidential-
There's, there's two different issues.
Then with her-
Listen, that, that, yes, sir.
There's certain documents that are not public, right? Those are the ones that now, like, you know, the most addresses, personal information, things like that, right? Um, the, the documents are available, and the only thing you're not allowed to cop, like, you have to get permission, first, there's copyrighted material, right? So, if it's copyrighted, in order for the borough to release it, they have to get permission from the copyright holder. In many cases, that's been done, for this particular request and for some others. So, they would actually now be allowed to be gotten, to answer your question, right? Once the copyright is released, then, they can be copied or they can be photographed, right? So, it's not so much a matter of, at this point, separate, it's only, the reason the right to know, there's, the requests are in writing, so people, so it's very clear to the borough and to the public what they're asking for and what they're getting. So, it's only been a response to what it is. If, if, if someone submitted a right to know request saying, I want to inspect the documents and take pictures of them, well, that's, that's a different process. Then it would probably just be limited to, the cost would be limited to making copies of items that had to be redacted, if there wasn't, if there wasn't a way to redact them without making it up. But that's how, that's just the, the process, so it depends on, it's hard to talk about it in general, just depends on the particular request that comes in and how the response is. And, and you're always free to file a right to know response, request, that they're treated in.
Well, did we have boxes of material that did not need redacted, that this is, um, Iker could've just simply taken pictures of without having supervision, and, I mean, because now we're paying for storage, and it's like-
Yeah, right, we just-
Well, no, it's ridiculous, actually, because I've been in the room, too, the room was plenty big enough for the fifty-two boxes, by the way, people, we did, we don't really have to make the storage.
We're gonna move on here, you know what?
Can we, uh, can we address-
Let's measure, you wanna measure?
Okay, wait a minute, you know what? Okay, we're done with that conversation for the moment, thank you. Amy Howe? Amy Howe?
Yeah, Boy.
Boy, sorry.
It's okay. Um, Amy Boy, I live at forty-six twenty-nine Prairie Road, um, Whitehall, one five two three six. So, I actually, I'm gonna go back to the water problem. Um, so, I actually live next door to Pat, and I actually live below, um, Lori here as well, and then the, behind the people on left, at the bottom is called West Club. So, I've been dealing with the water problem probably since I moved into my house eighteen years ago. So, when I bought my house, I put a French drain in the back of the yard, myself. Didn't call anybody in the borough, I, I took care of it myself. And then about two years ago, I, and that probably cost me about three thousand dollars. So, two years ago, I then put another French drain in a catch basin system, and all along, my coffee was in the huts. So, that cost me six thousand dollars, because I was getting so much water from that gully, and that's what they'd done the pavement or whatever they did on my club. Coming straight down, my yard was getting flooded, my shed was starting to rot from all the water, so I had to, I did that. So, I don't know why the borough can't handle doing something just as simple as that. I mean, six thousand dollars is a lot of money out of my own pocket, but why can't the borough, I mean, we all pay a hundred dollars a year toward a water catch system, that they can't use part of that water to go through to get, to dig a hole to put the sump in to catch the water, so that it dissipates appropriately. So, I'm just hoping that that gets solved, so that I, I mean, I still get water, but not quite as bad. But, I don't want to, whatever the borough does do, again, I just don't want them to ruin what I've done already in my yard, because I've put a lot of money into trying to keep my house safe. But, the rest of everybody else is still having the same issue, and it is kind of, it's twenty years, it's, it needs fixed.
Thank you.
Fix it.
No, I'm gonna, uh, have, well, yeah.
Go ahead, you can have Pat talk first.
Alright, next, John, Jane Cassiato.
Okay. Jane Cassiato, five-three-four-eight High Grove Road, and I'm the bully, since everybody, whoever does or does not know. First, I want to say that ever since Lincoln's days, the point of government is to try to help fix problems that are too big for individual people to fix. And with that spirit, I understand everybody's intention to help Mrs. Knezovich fix her yard. And I think that's great. But let's call it what it is, it's charity. This is not borough property, this is borough property. I also, I also have water problems, because I'm at the bottom of a hill. And we spent multiple tens of thousands of dollars this year repairing our house, anchoring our house, getting an inside French drain and a sump pump, getting an outside French drain, repairing three, uh, retaining walls. And I did not call the borough, I did not make it their problem. And I just want to know, is this swale on borough property, or is this swale on private property?
They put it on my- We're gonna have the engineer-
Okay, well, did you cede that property to them?
No, please, don't speak among each other in conversation this way.
Okay, and if all of these people decide that they want to help Pat, maybe they should be shovel-ready. Maybe Mr. Forty-eight Hours could be shovel-ready. And you know what? Marty, I got this letter in May of twenty-twenty-three, I think you forgot to put your return address away.
Alright, alright.
This letter of disinformation.
It's out of control here, so we have to make, make stop.
Yes, I am. I am, and I'm proud of that.
Okay, last, we have Marty, working on this, Pat Knezovich, please stand.
Okay.
Okay. Working on it. Ma'am?
She live there?
I really am, lots of words. I've been here so often, asking, begging, pleading, showing my problem. I really have lost the words. I've been here so often, asking, begging, pleading, showing my problem. Marty was able to handle the situation in thirty days. This has been going on for months, even years, if we look back far enough. Tonight, I would like to ask for the resignation put in against Courtney Worts. I don't think she is capable of doing her job or doing it in a manner that helps us. And that's my last resort. Those words do not come lightly. I'm eighty-six. I'm old. I'm dying. But I also have a home that I love and I will not let inaction on the poor part of our, let me call this office out here, manager of the borough ruin everything I worked for, everything that me and my husband worked for. It's your responsibility. That is your fucking road up there. And I'm tired of hearing. I'm tired of hearing whose road is it when I look up and see you up there plowing, salting, fixing and everything else? Whoever on this borough introduces what I just said for a vote, I want it voted on. No, I want her job. She makes a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year.
What's, one minute, one minute remaining.
That's incorrect.
Then tell us what she does make.
I'll have to look that up.
Yeah, tell, tell her, tell us what she makes.
Yes, ma'am. So, you're done with, you're done for me?
No, I'm not done. I've got thirty seconds.
Oh, you've got another minute? Okay.
I want a goddamn answer here. I'm tired of hearing, oh, talk about it or worship, nothing. I've talked to all of you. Some of you don't even have the decency to return my calls. And I've had, I've had to pay your salaries or try. You have no idea what it's like to live on a shoestring and to see everything you worked for ruined. If she can't do the job, get her out. And I'm surprised the mayor is even tolerating the inaction and the bullshit we have to take.
That's enough of that language. You know what?
Oh, no, no, I know what I've done. I know what.
She works at the direction of council and council hired her and she's here to stay. She's excellent. You're upset. We're gonna move on now.
Speak for yourself, Missy.
I'm not talking to you right now. I'm gonna direct the engineer to give a report on what everyone's been talking about so we can move on.
I'd like to make some comments.
Go ahead, Scott.
Sorry.
You will listen while we start speaking.
The swell located in an easement, it is. Um, it's located on your lot.
My property. I want it gone.
Correct.
How many times do we have to say this?
There's a sanitary.
Two weeks ago, someone shot me out. Go ahead, sorry.
There is a sanitary sewer that's located in that easement. I am not aware of a catch basin.
And you need to go and talk to.
That was buried.
Talk to Shoemaker.
We don't have information on that. Um, we, I can defer to the solicitor in regards to the agreement uh of, of West Club View in nineteen-seventy-two and the conditions therein, um, in regards to the maintenance of it, the snow removal and, um, paving. As far as, um, at the addition of storm, and please correct me if I'm wrong in my interpretation, but in the, the additions of curbs and storm sewers to be installed along West Club, um, all of the residents of West Club would have to approve that. It's in recorded, it's in recorded documents at the courthouse.
So, is it public or private?
The, um, the easement is public. Is the roadway.
Well, the roadway is, the carway is public, is the way it was accepted. The carway is public, but the stormwater's responsibility, the private owners in there.
Even on the easement?
Okay.
The easement, the, the easement's over.
Okay, is that a way more parking tickets, snow removal, whatever?
So, that you're basically saying we're not doing anything then?
Twenty-four years you've been dealing with this.
It's up to all of the residents and the public to do it.
The residents deserve some.
So, you just came to my property, put third, uh, an asphalt swelling without my permission, without my knowledge. Well, how you do, white all-borough people, when you live with yourselves, I don't know.
Mr. Engineer.
Let the engineer answer.
Let me ask you a serious question. So, if I went door-to-door on West Club, I got everybody who owns a home to sign off on a document that we want the street, like you did on Thurner, you widen the street, you put three storm sewers in it. Then you're telling me that you and the borough will then do that on West Club. Yes or no?
I can't make that decision. That's a council decision. I'm explaining to you, uh, what the condition, the current conditions are out there.
Okay, I want council then to commit that if I do the work and get people to sign, you guys will commit to widening the street and putting the three storm sewers like you should be doing. This pipe that people are talking about is not, is not gonna work. But your pipe system's not gonna work either. You've got to do on West Club what you did on Thurner. And if council will agree to that, then I will go door-to-door.
How about cleaning out the gully first? That's the first thing.
Can I say?
I also want to want to speak, please.
Real quick. So, that is a potential solution. Is it the best solution? Is it the only solution? No, but we're here, we're having, we're having conversations.
No, no, that is the solution. I don't need conversations. That is the solution. This thing about a pipe and a gully and all this other BS, it's all BS. I've, I've looked at this for three months. That's the solution.
Okay.
Thank you for your opinion.
Well, that's not my fit.
All right.
I feel, I feel, I feel.
Mr. Schmuck.
You know what? This meeting's out of order. We have to move on. The mayor would like to speak.
First of all, Marty, I want to thank you for taking care of, uh, of the Brownsville Road. I mean, that's gonna. I know, I know. That's gonna be a big help. But I think we should acknowledge, you know, Marty's work.
No, 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 no.
No, I know, I, I, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna have a big improvement.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be a big improvement.
So, I'm Whitehall man of the year this year?
Yeah, you gotta do a little bit more. All right. Second thing, second thing is, is, you know, talking about the asphalt. So, years ago, you, you know, all, we all know what's happening here. Water's coming up Brownsville Road and in the borough ass, you know, as, uh, borough-wide, you cannot put, uh, water in your sanitary sewers. And so, people were bringing it out and dumping it, you know, onto their, the roads. And in other parts of our community, there are storm sewers that take that. There are no storm sewers on, on, uh, West Club Road. So, it's, it's different than people getting water coming down a hill because we have a road that is a borough road that we're responsible for that is generating storm water that's coming down the hill. Now, the asphalt was put in so that it did.
Not my knowledge. I put that in there.
I, uh, you're, you're, you made, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna just tell you what, what happened.
But there's a storm sewer that's covered by our neighbor.
I'm gonna tell you what happened. Pat was.
Why aren't, why aren't you talking about what you covered up?
Please, I have, I have the floor.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all right. Okay, well, I'm, I'm just gonna explain how it got in, not, I, I understand your objections. So, Pat was getting water, it was jumping, imagine all this water coming down the hill. It's jumping the, you know, her property and coming down. That asphalt was put in to direct it down alongside. And then she, on her own, hired a landscaper to actually move, you know, some of the dirt up so it would stay on that, that side of the road. All right, so it was a, it's a, you know, temporary solution. The, the real solution is to pipe it, in my opinion. It's the pipe it, I know Marty's shaking his head. It's the pipe it, while it's coming down the road, it needs to go into catch basin and go down to curb. So, I don't know that you necessarily need, you know, catch basins all along there, but you need a catch basin where it's all ending up and it's all ending up at the end of the road. And so, you need a catch basin from there to take it down and I think that would solve, uh, everyone's problems. To me, that's the permanent solution. So, everybody come out during the budget, uh, season, which will be in October, there'll be.
November.
November, sorry.
First week, Saturday.
First week, so come out in November. That's the permanent solution, in my opinion. And, uh, and then, uh, but for, for right now, we want to make sure that the asphalt that was put in, apparently, you know, there's some cracks and we want to make sure there's not water leaking down from the floor of the asphalt. And that's the purpose of the work that the borough is doing right now.
You mean, you're gonna still keep that there and cover up the cracks without removing it?
It's only a temporary, uh.
I don't want more. I want it out of it. At.
I'm telling you.
First, please.
I can hear what he said he's doing. That's why I'm talking to him.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead. Put, say her name and address.
Judy Clover, um, Duncan Lane. Does Mr. Ross Mize who agree with your thoughts on this?
I don't know. We have to talk.
I'm just, I'm just working in, within the documents that have been recorded and, and the current situation that's there. I, we have experience and I've worked in your neighborhood prior.
I, I have to say.
Things can be fixed.
When we lived on Do-Do-De, they worked like crazy slow on that flogging there and they did all the work.
Oh, ever there's a big.
Understood, I understood. But, you know, the agreement's in place and just to mention that the residents of Curry would have to agree to that. Prior to this, they haven't been able to agree to that. I think the last time.
But I think we might be able to do something.
Oh, I'm sorry, West Club.
I think we might be able to do something.
Was in twenty-twelve.
Are we going to clean up the gully?
I don't know what it.
That's my question. I can't wait for the budget in three months. I'll be dead in six months. And what's going to happen to the gully and my home? Are we going to get somebody in there with a pick and shovel like Marty suggested?
Numbers and what we.
Oh, sure. I've been playing numbers for years. I'm done.
We did due diligence and we talked about this in February at the meeting.
The last time, two weeks ago, when you were here.
Excuse me, ma'am, can I speak?
I know, excuse me, but I thought two weeks ago.
You know what? In February, we, there was a consensus of council to assist like we did fifteen years ago.
Everything keeps getting pushed back, pushed back to the end, things are.
Finished, ma'am, you'll find out why. So, in April.
I already found out why in four minutes.
Okay, in April, we had a consensus of council to assist Pat again with that, the swell cleaning and the asphalt, okay? That being said, the next meeting, before the next public meeting, we had an executive session where Ms. Iker stated that Pat was getting an attorney. So, all, all communication had to cease because we can't talk when we're being sued. Correct, Solicitor?
See, it was to go through council and subsequently.
I clarify that.
Ma'am, I'm letting them know the story and how it played out.
Right, subsequently, Ms. Wirtz, I met and she said that she was not, uh, though, was she not retained counsel when she was back to, you were speaking with the borough?
Yes, we had that meeting in June and once that was clarified, the, the July meeting action was taken in public by council to, to what they had previously agreed upon in April.
And that's a month's delay and that's a, that's a reason for that particular, you know, that's what happened with that delay. So, we're gonna move forward.
Two weeks ago, we talked to you people and I thought people were gonna come, get rid of that asphalt.
Well, we have to move forward.
Okay, now we gotta wait till November?
We have to have a plan.
But in twenty-four years, why was it making it worse?
We have to have a plan with the numbers and what's gonna be approved.
A plan. Undo the storm sewer that was covered up with asphalt. Clear it out, put a pipe down and get another drain at the bottom. It doesn't take a rock and scientist.
I need to respectfully say something, please. Something has to be done because there is real damage being done to her house. I understand. To the extent, so, and thank you for explaining the history of it, but there's damage. Which I know nobody wants to hear, but that's part of the facts too. And, and there is, that something has to be done because the damage is. I understand. Yeah, we all do.
With all due respect, council voted two, two, two weeks ago to clean out that whole thing and it wasn't done.
We didn't say the whole gully.
Yes.
You know, the swell.
What, you want to be half-pregnant? I mean, the gully, the gully, the gully is, is ridiculous. Anybody.
Well, that's not what was, that's not what was agreed.
You guys voted to clean it out.
Yeah, to clean the swell.
Yeah, the borough, the borough, ma'am.
The swell was supposed to be gone. Get on to the swell. Get rid of that swell.
I think what's gonna happen, Marty, is, once we, uh, once we know when the asphalt is coming, I think probably the road crew will go up, you know, one more time to make sure that wherever they're laying it in the cracks, you know, it's, so they'll, they'll look at it. But it was to go down to the tree. It can only go where the asphalt is.
I understand, Jimmy.
Okay, you only go where the asphalt is.
So, now you want to put more asphalt on top of the asphalt. That is not getting rid of the asphalt. Let's keep putting a band-aid. Put more asphalt on the asphalt.
We're not getting rid of your asphalt. Um, the.
Don't, don't start with names.
Oh, come on. You know what asphalt comes with?
Two letters.
You need, you need a borough crew, guys. You need a couple of days of serious workup, Jimmy. You just can't throw asphalt under that. It's a band-aid. You, you need a couple of guys and dump trucks of stuff to get out of this.
Well, we have to direct the engineer.
I actually think your suggestion, Mayor, of bringing in the Boy Scouts would get more done than what this maintenance department would allow to do.
And I agree. My husband has a dump truck and he will park in your garage if you let him. And anybody who's standing here who would like to volunteer to clean that out.
You know what? Wait, folks, you know, with this conversation, we have to, please settle down.
No, let's get the Boy Scouts in. Let's get the Army in. Let's get the reserves in. Let's get the whole bucket of mess cleaned up.
That's unacceptable here if you want to say, well.
My home being ruined is not acceptable.
From everybody on your behalf and I understand the problem, but, you know, we have to be a little bit cordial, okay? We have a councilwoman that wants to speak.
So, so, Marty, you presented an option, right? The mayor also presented an option, things that have been bouncing around in my head as well. From, from our, I, okay, and we're, right, we're removing the asphalt. I got you. All right, thanks. Um, so, from, from an engineering standpoint, is, is there some way that we could potentially look at what is a better option? Is the, is the model that happened on Thurner something that feasible, is feasible potentially for West Club? Is that? But we're, you know, we're talking about adding sewers. We're talking about the option of taking everything out and piping from one road to another, like.
It's certainly could be an option for you.
Okay.
Um, that was the first project that I assisted Ms. Over on in the borough was Thurner Drive.
Okay.
Twenty years ago, uh, twenty-three years ago.
You did a very good job.
Thanks. And, so that's an option.
Okay.
But again, I believe the question was. Well, I think her question's hypothetical, I think. I think the question was if, hey, if this was a solution and if it was, if West Club, uh, people would be available to these things, would it work?
Yes, well, yeah, it would work.
Well, that's, you know, what would it, like, I think she's asking, would you be able to flesh out something that's.
Well, we would have to pre, prepare a quick plan and, and an estimate.
Okay.
For your consideration.
Can, can we as council agree that that is a, a next best step forward? I realize it's not immediate. I know.
You have to have a plan.
But we have to go forward in some way instead of just.
You have to do, you have to do something. Yeah, so we'll have, uh.
There's a suggestion.
I have like both suggestions.
She has a sanitary sewer line that runs down that gully. Get your Roader Ruder man in there. I asked you, Jim, it's a possibility that line could be leaking under there. When her husband was down yesterday, there's a pipe sticking up with water or whatever coming out of it. At least stars in the gully itself. Get the Roader Ruder truck, which I understand you have on call or a butt track.
As council's going to direct.
Can we get Roader Ruder?
Council's gonna direct our engineer to come up with some plan and budget items that we're gonna look at in the next couple of weeks. So, we're gonna direct them to do that. It's gonna be much further than doing what we've been doing and trying to assist.
I'm sure you can find ground one, too.
So, we will, um, do that. Okay, Scott?
She wasn't looking up all those rate-to-date reports.
Somebody had, somebody had ran through last week with.
We do it every five years.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to our, um, public hearing for limited amusement arcades. Just to tell Ed if you're gonna. Okay.
But so now, now is the time and place for the public hearing on zoning amendments regarding, uh, zoning.
But now, now is the time and place for the public hearing on zoning amendments regarding, uh, limited amusement arcade definitions. I'm gonna turn it over to this, Mr. Delet, who's our code enforcement officer and zoning director, he's gonna walk through the amendment. After he's done, any member of the public that wants to speak on the zoning amendment will have an opportunity for or against and then there'll be an opportunity to be heard during the public hearing at the conclusion of a public hearing, assuming that concludes tonight. It's gonna be on, it's on the agenda for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Right now.
In your meeting materials this evening is a memorandum dated, written August second, twenty twenty-four, regarding the zoning ordinance amendment dealing with revisions to the limited amusement arcade regulations. At, uh, council's June fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, council authorized the advertisement of the ordinance pursuant to requirements in the state's and this county's planning code and scheduled this public hearing to be held this evening. The, the ordinance was sent to the, um, county planning agency, the Allegheny County, uh, Department of Economic Development, as well as.
But, may I please cease to speak or go out in the hall and do that, we're trying to conduct our meeting. Sorry, Scott.
That's all right. As well as the, uh, county law library as required by the MPC. Uh, borough has proof of publication of advertisement of this ordinance, um, in this public hearing that appeared in the, uh, Post Gazette South Extra on July eighteenth and July twenty-fifth. Um, you have the ordinance that is dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The summary of the ordinance is as follows. Section one is the addition of definitions to, uh, part two general legislation, or it's chapter one eighty zoning article two for private clubs, convenience store and grocery store. Part two, uh, involves, uh, is amended as follows, and essentially what, what this does is add private clubs as a, um, as a principal use that is permitted to have a limited amusement arcade, and that is three or less amusement arcades, which are incidental and permitted as an accessory use in bowling alleys, convenience stores, um, grocery stores, high turnover restaurants, low turnover restaurants and private clubs. Section three is the effective date and retailer, and section four is severability, this is typical of any zoning ordinance. Uh, in your packet is a memorandum from, uh, is a letter from Carol Pacillo, the Borough Planning Commission Chair dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, with the, uh, Borough, the, the Planning Commission's, uh, recommendation on the proposed ordinance, which they made at its, uh, July tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. The letter is included in your packet and essentially they listed several items which I would classify as, uh, clerical corrections. Uh, the county Department of Economic Development, uh, conducted its review and the, uh, borough received a review letter from ECA EP dated July ninth, twenty twenty-four, which is also included in your meeting materials to see. And their discussion involved, um, comments on definitions of provisions, which should probably be considered, right? Borough Planning Commission's word on, um, grocery stores. That concludes my presentation.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this particular ordinance? So, uh, does anybody from the board have any comments on the ordinance?
Uh, I do, I do, that, I mean, this entails not only the, um, the games of skill that we're used to, which is the claw machine for getting a stuffed animal prize. However, it also entails the opportunity to, um, win cash prizes as these are the so-called Pennsylvania skill games. They walk like a duck, they quack like a duck and by goodness, they look like a slot machine to any, um, person whatsoever. So i- if it isn't a, um, structure that would offer some societal benefit like a social club, then absolutely, positively not, no. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Uh, so we get a motion to the public.
Motion to close the public meeting?
I'll make a motion. Hearing, hearing.
Oh, men still want them. Um, sorry. Close the hearings, long-term say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
I'd ask for a motion to, uh, read, Jeanne, those ordinance in summary form.
Within, in the ordinance has, within, uh, minor changes, not a minor, uh, change.
Yes.
So move.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
In ordinance, the Borough of Whitehall, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending part two general legislation, chapter one eighty zoning, article two, definitions and word usage in article twenty-five, accessory structures and accessory uses of the code of the Borough of Whitehall.
Oh.
You may wanna think, I'll just pay you.
I'm sorry. No, I apologize, I'll start over. Um, it's an ordinance of the Borough of Whitehall, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending part two general legislation, chapter one eighty zoning, article two definitions and word usage, and article twenty-five accessory structures and accessory uses of the code of the Borough of Whitehall to add the definitions of private club, convenience store and grocery store. To add private club to the list of enumerated commercial uses where limited amusement arcades are permitted as accessory uses in the borough and to require all enumerated commercial uses where limited amusement arcades are permitted in the borough to have security monitor, excuse me, monitoring during hours of operation. You're welcome.
So I'd ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number eleven seventy-five.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Ms. Book?
Yes.
Mrs. DePew?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Vichetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Soborowski?
Yes.
And Mr. V.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our bills of payroll.
Uh, administrative services, Mrs. DePew?
In order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Vichetti?
In order.
Public safety, Mr. Heep?
In order.
Public works, Mrs. Iker?
I have a quick question for you, Ms. Woods. Um, there were several charges to lindy paving entailing asphalt for paving, asphalt for patching and asphalt for patching again. Um, so where, where was this applied?
It's throughout the Borough Public Works, it keeps an ongoing list of hotmails that we repair, patches after nature and in some cases, residents when their driveway incurred crush, we repair.
I, it is, um, to my opinion that no such asphalt was applied on the swell of Curry Road to, um, West Club, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's in order.
Recreation, Mr. Soborowski?
Uh, it's in order.
Storm sewer fund, Mrs. Iker?
I will read aloud what is, um, the storm sewer fund, uh, bills. There are only three of them, is simply because a resident asked what is their storm, uh, water fee going to? Jordan Tax Services, Inc. takes a commission of our storm sewer water processing claims. So for the privilege of dealing with those fund folks, uh, Whitehall pays one hundred and forty dollars and thirty-eight cents this fill period. For the project, uh, that was at the Wyman Road Stormsore, it was an emergency rehab, which is appropriately coming out of the Emergency Storm Water Fund, which was allocated for fifty K for the entire year and a little over thirty-five K, uh, was utilized in the repair of the, the Wyman Road Stormsore, which was an emergency job, yes, we do emergency jobs, not just in the budget period. Thus, there is thirteen K remaining in the emergency sewage fund. Moreover, uh, the borough pays a, um, note, uh, um, to West Banko in the amount of over twenty-five K per month. And if you add up all the payments that we make in an annual year, it is about half of what we bring in for our, um, sewage fund, such that it should be increasing in value as it is indeed a sinking fund within that contractual agreement. And, um, this is the best I, that I can do to dissect these figures, uh, considering that these numbers are not appropriately audited within, uh, the, the borough audit that we experienced last meeting, uh, due to the fact that the storm water, uh, fees are intermingled with the sanitary sewage fees, which is not appropriate with the West Banko contract. Moreover, we are not using, uh, generally accepted accounting principles.
Well, that's another form of accounting principle that is accepted by the auditors, it's been said in two different meetings at length. And, uh, so we're gonna move on, that you're gonna approve that or?
Uh, so with, uh, the over eight hundred K that is brought in via the, our storm water fees and the late fees thereof, that concludes my report and, uh, they, these bills are indeed in order.
Sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Iker?
In order.
Local fiscal recovery fund, Mrs. DePew?
In order.
Capital projects fund, Mrs. DePew?
In order.
I'd ask for a motion to approve bills on the bill list dated August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, from the general fund totaling sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eleven cents, from the storm sewer fund totaling sixty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and nineteen cents, from the sanitary sewer fund totaling three, three hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents, from the local fiscal recovery fund in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, dollars and fifty-one cents, and from the capital projects fund in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, forty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
So move, second.
Motion made, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I see, uh, under administrative services Comcast business, we put in truck lines with five, your internet. I was just curious about an update on, um, the recording of, of the meetings. Uh, and I guess that was an intricate part, so, um, wondering if we're any closer since I guess we paid for something by wrong.
So I'm in the process of soliciting votes, I'm hopeful that I will have at least three for you at the next council meeting, uh, as far as the Comcast upgrade. I spoke with them this morning, um, the bills are about, I figure there's two bills outlined with the old credits that have to be adjusted on our split increase that I spoke about previously will take effect on September second.
So, okay, and then you guys won't accept the donation of, they said I might, I might have money I could get donations for?
Donations for what?
For the recording of the, I mean, two years ago, I said I had, you know, pledged donations.
I don't think that was even possible at the time and now, I mean, we still have all that to be worked out.
Okay.
Okay, that's, oh, yeah.
Uh, so next I'd ask for a motion to approve the ratified, um, checks and transfers to be ratified from the general fund in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents, from the sewer fund in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents, and from the payroll fund in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents for a grand total ratification in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
So move, second.
Motion made, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
And then I'd like to ask for a motion to approve payroll, or, excuse me, ratified payroll from the pay date of July sixth, twenty, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
So move, second.
Motion made, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And there is an overturn list attached.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, quick point of order, Madam President.
Yes.
Courtney, could you do me a favor? Look at number D on the agenda, it had no number for local fiscal recovery, but I believe it was the two twenty-five. But underneath that, I have a two thousand and twenty-two construction fund for the number from the local fiscal recovery?
Yes, that is, uh, a mis-typed, so.
Can we just, yeah, I just wanna make sure we get that.
Solicitor, to, to clarify, the amount listed on the agenda for local fiscal recovery fund is zero. Uh, there's a typo, what, the amount is listed under the twenty-twenty-two construction fund.
But you read, you read the numbers correctly.
Correct, yes, the agenda, we can correct.
If, if, if the motion was correct, then it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
All the items listed on the, uh, just, uh, gave people an idea what you were.
Okay.
A more corrected, posted, amended agenda that shows, you have the correction.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, so thank you.
A typo.
It was lost, it was lost, the motion that was read was correct.
Correct, yes.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Now we have the approval on the minutes.
I have one correction.
Oh, yes, Mayor.
Page, uh, seven, who's the, what's that?
Page seven?
Page seven, uh, the second paragraph from the top, it's Aileen, A-I-L, who are Birmingham in the middle, she's seen that four hundredth birthday. Her name is spelled A-I-L-E-N, and then you might as well throw in her middle initial L and then Birmingham.
Birmingham's about correct.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with the question, I'd like to make a motion, will you approve the minutes from July twenty?
So move, or second, sorry.
Motion made, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay, next we have report, the mayor, no one?
All right, Emma. All right, first item I have is the monthly report for July twenty twenty-four. EMS assists were one sixty-seven, court hearings pre-trial, sixty-six. I'm gonna, there are four numbers that are exactly the same as twenty twenty-three. This is one, there were sixty-six in twenty twenty-three. Accidents, fourteen, same number in twenty twenty-three. Criminal arrests, twenty-two. Traffic stops, one hundred and three, same number in twenty twenty-three. Traffic details, forty-nine, same number. Uh, uh, traffic violations citations were one hundred and traffic violations, uh, warnings were eighty-two. Uh, money collected, turned over to the borough during July twenty twenty-four, totaled two thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Chief Gregoric and Deputy Chief Gable attended the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association Conference in Erie, Pennsylvania uh, on July twenty-second and twenty-fifth, uh, was a good conference, chief?
It was a good conference.
Sergeant Mayburn completed.
It was a good conference.
He answered my question. He doesn't wanna elaborate, you know?
They had a conference, uh, conference area with police cars at their lights flash. They had a couple speakers, some were good, some were boring, but all in all, it was a good, it was a good conference.
Did you learn something new, chief?
I did, I always learned something new.
Awesome, thank you, take it.
Sergeant Mayburn completed TASER ten, uh, instructor training at Jefferson Hills Police Department on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. You will now certify our officers to use the new TASER devices that were delivered in June. So a lot of the training we try to do in-house and not, you know, hire people from the outside and save, save some money for the department.
Last year at the conference, we demonstrated these TASERS and we won this year.
Awesome.
Personally, the water line, uh, replacement project on Baptist Road is nearing completion. The contractor moved to nighttime operations this week. Crews will be working from seven PM to five AM, Monday through Thursday. So if you know anybody on Baptist, might as well move. Uh, once complete, they will pave, uh, Grove Road and then move to, uh, Baptist Road. The contractor did fix the load. The contractor did fix the low spots on Grove Road this week, the week of the twenty-third. And I do believe, I, I can verify that, I did drive over the road. I think it did a job. So thank you, Scott Russmizer, for making that happen. All right, moving along. I also attended my Pennsylvania State Mayor Association Conference. It was a terrific conference. We had the lieutenant governor, the attorney general, the speaker of the House of Representatives, and a number of other prominent speakers and great topics. And yes, Ms. Thomas, I did learn a lot at that.
Fantastic. I'm glad to hear it. Got to learn something.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, I did, following the conference, I did present the proclamation to Aileen Birmingham over at the Paramount. And she had a nice little party going there and I came in and made the presentation. And she kept interrupting me. And, and so some of her relatives wanted to stop her. I said, no, 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 it's her birthday. She can interrupt me as many times as she was. And she's just, was a delightful person. And I enjoyed making the presentation. It's a good, good birthday celebration and they had it on Zoom. So all her, you know, relatives and other parts of the country could participate. Next item I have is to announce the awards that will be presented on Community Day. So the first award is the Person of the Year, and that's going to be Mark Christman. If you know Mark, Mark is on our zoning hearing board. But if you know anything about our Person of the Year's award, you have to have some celebrity. And Mark has been really active in promoting awareness and cures for facetioscapulohumeral muscular dystrophy. And he, there was recently an article in the Tribune Review. So he's done a phenomenal job. I'm looking at a resolution that was adopted by the Congress on this subject. Mark had a hand in that. And so he is our Person of the Year. The, we're also giving two community service awards for the work that has been done in the Baldwin Manor Association. Those awards are going to Sean Crane and Michelle Crawley. And Michelle Crawley was instrumental in getting the grant for the Baldwin Manor Association. And Sean Crane has been donating equipment and services for years. And both of them deserve recognition for the work that they're doing in the park that we all enjoy because it is a public park. Then we got one Good Neighbor Award. Some years we get many, there were a couple of years we didn't get any. But Dennis Stumpf is the person who's going to get a Good Neighbor Award. I talked to him today. And so those are our awards, which will be presented eleven o'clock, right? Introduction of elected officials and awards. And at Brennan Plaza, so will not be at Snyder Field like it has been in the past. So if you want to be present for those awards, please come at that time. And lastly, I'd like to praise West, West Management for the garbage.
Waste management.
Waste man. Did I say that? Management. West, West.
Way close.
Yeah, no, no, West Management. For the partnership that they've engaged in with Whitehall Borough with regard to recycling. So I decided to bring this box. We got sixteen of these. And I think they're phasing them out. I want to show this because I want you to find these on Community Day. Okay, now, there are eight that will look exactly like this. I don't know if all eight will be put out. But wherever they are, wherever the locations are, there will be one of these. Then the White Health Committee for Environmental Action is putting black over this only. And we will put recycling on there. We will put the what items will be recycled, okay? Now, these boxes will be, and they were donated for free by Waste Management. Waste Management. So sorry, sorry, thank you for correcting. It's been a long day. So there will be bags in these so that the whatever liquids or whatever doesn't get on the cardboard. The Public Works Department said they have bags both for the trash and for recycling. What will happen is, we all know that nobody, you know, it's highly unlikely that the only thing we're going to find in the recycling is recycling. So there will be other items. People will make mistakes. We understand that. The White Health Committee for Environmental Action will remove all the foreign material that may be in there. And, you know, we're, we're working on the process. It will be packaged up again and then held. And what Waste Management, again, this is part of the partnership. They have agreed to deliver blue toders. These will be delivered Monday after the event. And I think it's a one-time deal and they'll pick up the toders later. So we'll use them just for this event. We're going to put the recycling in there. Although, you know, I, I don't know this for sure, but presumably it would be when our recycling is. I mean, that's when they would have a truck. Or, or do you, do you think they would come?
I don't know if you saw the latest thing though from Terry and JR, Monday.
They, they will pick it up on.
They'll pick up the latest special trip on Monday.
On Monday to pick, pick it up. When are they delivering the toders?
That I have not seen.
Okay, that's what you were, that's what you were talking, you know. So at any rate, well, just suffice it to say that we have an agreement from West Waste Management to provide these blue toders. And we'll get them. And if they're going to be picked up on Monday, we'll make sure that, you know, all the recycling is in there. And I want, I want this to be on the public record. I promised Kathy Depew that if she was not happy with the handling of this matter, that I would give her a twenty-five dollar gift card to the restaurant of her choice. So I have a lot, you know, pressure here to ensure that this not only meets, you know, the standards of the borough, but the very high standards of Kathy Depew. And I'm happy to do it.
By pushing you, you got it done before the night before. Good job, Kathy.
All right, well, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say that that was much appreciated and that you worked at it from the corporate responsibility angle. Great job.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Next, our solicitor's report, Mr. Furman.
Do I have a report this evening?
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our engineer's report, Mr. Russmizer.
Thank you, Madam President. The report, the review with you this evening's dated August the second. Under item two, operation and maintenance plan section, under the twenty twenty-three spot lining repair contract, I'd like to make counsel aware that State Pipe Services has completed that project. They have submitted their first and final pay application. We reviewed it. It's in order. The recommended motion is to approve pay application one and final in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, ninety-five cents for the two thousand and twenty-three Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer spot lining repair contract to State Pipe Services Incorporated.
Any questions? So move. Second?
I was second.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Move twice.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. On page two, under the twenty twenty-three capital lining program, Jet Jack has continued work under that contract. They have submitted their first payment application for consideration. We reviewed it. It is in order. The recommended motion is to approve pay application number one in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents for the twenty twenty-three Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer capital lining program contract to Jet Jack Incorporated.
So motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, continuing under the operation and maintenance plan, all of the projects for the O and M were bid out. We'll start with the twenty twenty-four CCTV inspection contract. Six bids were received on August the first, twenty twenty-four for the Whitehall Borough twenty twenty-four CCTV inspection contract. Roto-Rooter Service Company was the lowest qualified responsible bidder with a bid amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and no cents. The bid tab has been attached to the report. The recommended motion is to award the Borough of Whitehall twenty twenty-four CCTV inspections contract to Roto-Rooter Service Company with a bid amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and no cents. Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Moving on to the second O and M contract, the twenty twenty-four sanitary sewer excavation repair contract. Two bids were received on August first, twenty twenty-four for the twenty twenty-four Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer excavation repair contract. Roto-Rooter Service Company submitted, I'm sorry, Roto-Rooter Service Company was the lowest qualified responsible bidder with a bid amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and no cents. Again, that bid tab is attached to the report. The recommended motion is to award the twenty twenty-four Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer excavation repair contract to Roto-Rooter Service Company in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and no cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, two bids were received on August first for the Borough of Whitehall Capital Lining Program. Jet Jack was the lowest qualified responsible bidder with a bid price of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Bid tab has been attached. The recommended motion is to award the twenty twenty-four Whitehall Borough Capital Lining Program to Jet Jack Incorporated with a bid amount of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars and no cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And the final bids received, they were for the spot lining contract. There were two bids received on August first, twenty twenty-four for the Whitehall Borough sewer spot lining repair contract. State Pipe Services Incorporated was the lowest qualified responsible bidder with a bid amount of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and no cents. Bid tab has been attached. The recommended motion is to award the twenty twenty-four Whitehall Borough sewer spot lining repair contract to State Pipe Services Incorporated with a bid amount of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and no cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
All right. I think this will help me, but also other people. So we just approved a spot lining repair contract and a capital lining repair contract. Help us understand the difference between the two.
Simply put, it's the length of the liner.
Okay.
Some sections or segments of sewer may have an defect or a crack or, or so on. Using my hands here. Typically, spot liners are six feet and under.
Six feet and under, okay.
Where some of your line segments for your sanitary sewer could be in excess of three hundred feet. And that would be one continuous liner that would be installed inside of the hose.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
One follow-up question on that. Thank you for that explanation. What part of this, if any at all, is responsive to the grow grant?
There will be, sewer televising could possibly be used for the grow grant in, in that project, but these are state one-on-one projects. Those projects will be bid out a little later.
Yes, yes, it is. It's just quite a bit of funds, so I want to make sure that the grant funds actually get applied. Thank you.
Under, on page three, under item four, just to let counsel know, Lower, Overlook Park is, has been nearly completed. The asphalt paving has been installed. The rubberized surface was installed. I will let you know that it was quite the challenge to keep the dirt off of the rubberized surface. It was like a twenty-four hour curing time. So fences, temporary fences had to be installed for the finished surface.
Of course.
So we are working through the contractor to close out the contract, finalize things. There are, there is, there is a few things that are going to have to be corrected. But the only thing that is causing the park not to be open is the railing for the large sections of steps. The material that was delivered to fabricate the railing was flawed. So it had to be rejected and sent back. It was being fabricated.
Do we have, you're looking at me, so I'm going to ask a question. Do we have an asked demand of when the final inspection might happen and we could open the book?
We hope to have the, the final inspection can be done now. Obviously, the railing isn't there at all. I'm going to arrest and roll them off the park just for safety concerns because it is a.
That's a big step.
Quite a long section of stairs, yes. Maybe we could consider that, opening up the lower, just leave the stairs closed as a possibility.
I mean, I know that's a huge pain in the butt for the residents that live up top, but I also know they've been waiting for.
Sure. Yes. So landscaping is ongoing? I, my next visit is planned for Friday, so I will look at, at that and certainly be able to update Ms. Wirth on it soon.
Great, thank you.
One more follow-up question on that. Very great news, by the way, and I commend you for your progress reports on that. We discussed last council meeting about the repairing of the Spring Valley stairs and that I understood was going to take some time to allow the bidders to be able to be in the property and see the space. So I wanted to make sure that that downtime was not going to distract from the opening time of the, the other stairs and of course, the playground.
Well, thank you, Ms. Iker. Just let counsel know that we are working through the contract documents for the phase two or the Spring Valley stairs system. We are planning to advertise that project this month. But no access to that for inspections and review by the potential bidders will not be a problem for that park. And again, we don't anticipate really the phase two project occurring until after the calendar year of the new year.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Under item twelve on page four, under the pavement maintenance program, just advise counsel that the curb and drainage work will be starting the week of, next week, August twelfth, and tentatively scheduled for the milling and paving to start on the week of the August nineteenth. And that's all I have to report on this evening. If there are any questions, I can certainly address them.
Special to counsel, we'll move on to the next report. Manager, Ms. Wirth?
First of my report is in regards to the pension committee meeting. The pension committee met on July thirty-first with representatives. I'm sorry. Oh, no, no, can you hear me? All right. The pension committee met on July thirty-first from representatives from Macon Hall and CIM. I'm happy to report that both pension plans are performing really well. They are quote, "well managed and well funded" for both of our third-party representatives. Historically, our performance on these plans has been above market. And our current funding ratios increased significantly from twenty twenty-one valuation, mostly due to investment gains. And they currently stand at eighty-eight percent for the lease plan and one hundred and three percent for the non-uniform. So we anticipate with that overfunding, with the MMO calculation, will continue to drop, yes. Next up, I just wanted to give you an update on a few grants that I've been working on. Awards for the ARPA multi-purpose facilities grant that Alyssa, myself, and Paula Kelly worked on should be announced this month. The org meeting date has not been announced, but I've been checking in regularly. So I'm really hoping that, you know, we have some good news at the next meeting or the first meeting in September. And just as a reminder, that was the grant for the new lighting upstairs and a new roof for the municipal building. If you are unsuccessful, which we're hoping we're not, there is also an opportunity to pursue a local share account grant. I've had success with this grant in the past for public works equipment. We specifically have done that for the Cabato in recent years. So that's an option. Also, the public works supervisor and I are discussing putting an application for the local share grant for a bucket truck. For those of you that don't know, we rely heavily on Brentwood Borough for their bucket truck. And it is a fantastic relationship. It's great. But it would be nice to have one of those in-house for their use so that we're not relying on our neighbor as much. And then last but not least, I've been investing in a grant for the solar panel project that will be bid later this month. I've reached out to the Whitehall Committee for Environmental Action and the PA Solar Center to help support us in this application. So a lot of different things going on. And then as far as the motion on my report, the public works supervisor has received confirmation from TriStar that an order for the two new F three fifty pickups that are slated for replacement in twenty twenty-five can be placed now. We have been doing that pretty much since. Uh, we have been doing that pretty much since COVID, given the long lead times for both police and public works vehicles. Um, so this ensures that, you know, our fleets remain in top notch and we're not experiencing any delays. No payments for delivery will happen until the new budget year. This is just an asking for an authorization to place an order for these two pickup tree, two pickup trucks um for twenty twenty-five.
Uh, hold on, I I have a couple of questions before we begin to that. One is that we had uh applied for with with hopes for Public Works to have a wood chipper. Uh, did that funding ever come through?
No, we were not successful in that grant application.
Okay, all right, moving on to the the trucks. Um, for one thing, it's not in the budget for this calendar year. You're you're discussing for the budget for twenty twenty-five. However, what you're discussing is akin to what happened last calendar year before this body with the fire department truck. And it happened to be a fire department bucket truck that we wanted to uh make sure that we could place the order before we could have the the funds allocated. And the this time, here we are in in just uh saying that uh we're we're gonna do this, what's to stop us from saying, oh, jeez, we didn't have any money for it or once it comes to the November budget time. Um, there are a number of alternative fuel and E V grants to consider from the Pennsylvania Department of uh Environmental Protection that are available between now and December twentieth. However, what uh this is directly recommending is that we purchase not only a specific version of diesel truck, but a very, very, very specific thing and where the fire department received all sorts of pitch back regarding their brand choice when they have very specialized needs with their garage, when our public works can take really any make or model of garage. Um, uh, public vehicle truck. Um, Allegheny County even has a clean air fund uh funding for municipality vehicles of uh that is still open between now and September twenty-third. We have federal fund funding still in available to us by the Inflation Reduction Act. And I can't believe it, this is true, but despite the fact that we did what we did with the COVID money, using it on Overlook Park, they are are still interested in helping us fund our um uh public works uh vehicles uh with um uh other methodologies, just as long as it's not diesel. Well, I have previously reported in my public works report that Baldwin Borough has gone with E V vehicles with their public works trucks. Is there any effort to discuss with them as to how that decision came about and whether or not these vehicles would perform in similar uh terrain as we experienced in Whitehall?
Oh, Beth Lynn, are you asking the manager about what
Uh, no, 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 I I have, I
What's your question, because we have to
Uh, I have a a a very detailed list of exactly how um the this should not be at all discussed right now and it should be at least table uh before we can uh fully investigate this. So I, here I am on the um the Baldwin Borough, we we should have at least discussed with them their experience with their E V ve- vehicles for public works trucks. As I previously reported as well, Baldwin Whitehall School District has acquired the a new fleet of school buses for uh via E V, via simple dollar grants without any cost to uh municipal taxpayers. And since uh these are very um heavy-ton uh vehicles that are running on our Whitehall roads, maybe we should have a conversation. Furthermore, there is no communication as to why diesel or this particular model is the only viable option and the only viable option, which I demand a report from the superintendent of Public Works without this uh game of working through the the borough manager to explain such an a gross expenditure of our public works of a at least a hundred and fifty K.
Okay, Beth Lynn, we're gonna
Uh, I look, I had eight points and I'm on my eighth point
All right, please read it.
That we we budgeted for uh thirty-seven K for fuel of our trucks. Why would we continue to burn this with more diesel than we had in the past?
I don't know, where do you want to go with that?
If council wants to investigate moving to electronic vehicles, that's your choice, I need to be directed to do that, this is simply
Sir, do you want to say, does somebody stand, I'm talking to you.
Me?
Do you want to stand up and say your name and address?
Bill Marcus, twenty twenty-seven Provost Road. I think the Baldwin Borough electric vehicle for public works that you're talking about is a supervisor vehicle. I can tell you right now that an electric vehicle will not work for snow removal, one hundred percent hands down. That's why they picked the diesel trucks. They last longer, less maintenance, but E V is definitely not the way to go for a public works vehicle.
To follow up, Mr. Harris uh has been very clear in previous budget budget meetings, uh, that this is what works for them. Um, if you recall, a few years ago, under the previous supervisor, he did have a slightly different truck, a model that, you know, they found wasn't working for them, they moved to this and it seems to be working well, they've not reported otherwise. Again, this is simply just something you have done in the past with both public works and police vehicles to get ahead of a delayed ordering.
Right.
Okay, for that, we're gonna make a motion and place the order for two Ford F three fifty open up for two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion domain second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
And then last but not least, um, and if those of you that sat at lunch with me at the senior X interviews earlier this year may recall, Dr. Lux approaching uh myself about a collaboration on a district-wide calendar for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Um, so I'm happy to report that Alyssa did attend a meeting, uh, last week with representatives from the school district and Baldwin Borough. She's gonna elaborate on how that collaboration is, is moving forward.
Yes, we are very happy to have the opportunity to work on the school district and surrounding municipalities to create a cohesive and informational source for district-wide events. The calendar will be of no cost to the borough, it will highlight borough council meetings, recreation events, and other borough events. Um, pictures of Whitehall Pool and Summer Camp will be featured in the calendar for the months of July and August, so look out for those. Um, the district calendar had previously only been distributed to the students, but the school district is working with sponsors to potentially nail the calendar to households in both boroughs and northern township. Um, the final edits have been sent over today and we are very excited to present a community-wide collaboration calendar.
Sounds great.
That's exciting. Glad to see that collaboration. Yes, all of those will have to report.
Quick question, um, on the manager's report about the solar panel project?
Yes.
Um, do do we have any gifts as you are, we are bidding it out later this month? Do we get like a cost analysis of when these panels will pay for themselves? Um, in savings, you know, any
We, filling up, if you recall, we previously pursued this through uh Connect and we're hoping to uh not activate it, but as a solicitor and and we came to know, it does have to be bid, it's not exempt, given, you know, its nature of utility. Um, so there were, I believe, five proposals that the borough received for four different sites. Um, we were provided all of that breakdown previously. Um, we scrapped that project because we have to do a closed bid for this. So until the bid is received and we know what exactly we're installing, it's really hard to answer that specifically, but previous assessments have been provided.
Okay, so I could, yeah, because they they were different, right? Because we had three bids.
It was done through a different process, yes.
Yeah, I could tell you, Jack, Jack, we'll go ahead, sorry.
Would that be a an okay parallel to to what we're doing now? I mean, is it, is the scope of the project pretty much the same as the previous project that we've scrapped?
It's it's similar, yeah, I won't say exact, but it's it's similar where we're looking at one specific location, the Merza Roof Building. Um, the specs have been uh designed by
There was like five locations, I think.
Previously, there were, yes, the project that's being bid uh is for solar panels on the roof of the Merza Building.
Just the Merza Building?
Correct.
Just the Merza Building?
Just to start, that was the only, uh, the previous bulk solicitations proposals that had been received. That was the one site that consistently fell within the fifty thousand dollar budget that coun- council has allocated under capital. That was the logic for starting with that. It also conveniently had the most return on investment compared to the other sites.
Is there any other program, just out of curiosity, um, where we lease the space to a company, right? So then the borough doesn't have the liability of updating panels, updating batteries, et cetera, et cetera, later down the road. Is that any sort of, is there any companies that do that?
Donna's answering that for us, she's like Not on a commercial side, on residential, yes, but not on the commercial. It might attest to her expertise.
Because two of us have solar panels and they
Yeah, Eric, Eric has a background in it as well.
Have we both had that option of leasing versus owning? It doesn't pay for itself. Um, the leasing that you're paying for over the months doesn't, isn't as eh economical as buying the panels and getting thirty years of use of them guaranteed.
As as someone who personally bought my solar panels, I can attest to that. My return on investment I'm seeing because of client rate.
Cool.
Uh, thanks, Dan. All right, so we have our manager and site manager? Okay, now we have
Can I just ask, could the grant that you're waiting on, what state agency or federal agency you're coming?
So I, which grant?
Uh, the one for the upstairs
It's a multi-municipal, it's ARPA through COVID funds administered by the D C D.
D C D?
It's got a very long title through different agencies, but it's it's COVID money that the D C D is administering, administering.
Lasting money.
All right.
It's fingers crossed, this is a truly once in a blue moon opportunity to call up and Alyssa, I've really excited about.
How much was, what's the amount for?
Uh, just under a million.
No.
Yeah, for the roof and the replacement of the roof uh on the library admin level and for new lighting on the entire library community roof level.
Okay.
Thank you.
They'll actually replace the roof before they put the panels on, is that what you're saying?
They should
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to our committee reports, planning and zoning, Ms. Moon, Chatty.
Uh, no update, uh, next planning commission meeting is next week on the fourteenth, the next zoning hearing board meeting is on uh August twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Library, Miss Thomas.
Um, the library board will meet next week, but I would like to report that um last Tuesday in the community room was the library's Whitehall Reads Program. Um, it was a packed house, about a hundred attendees there to talk about and discuss American sirens, the story of the Freedom House here in Pittsburgh that started paramedics across the country. Um, really amazing stories, if you haven't read it yet, there's still books available to read. There's a movie that was created, documentary on W Q B D. Um, one of the paramedics, Mr. Moon, was there, it was a fantastic uh hour and a half together, um, really well attended. So kudos to the library and Hannah, I know you were there and helping and everything like that, so, yep. Mayor was there, Tristan was there, Kristy was there.
I did go there, actually. I'm curious. It was so good. It was a real
My creation, Mr. Sherbrooke.
Looks like Hannah's here for a report.
I have a short one tonight, um, we have a big thing going on this weekend, we've been planning since September. Um, our Community Day Weekend is Saturday and Sunday. Um, Saturday, we start with a race and then we continue on throughout the day and end with a concert. Um, I just looked at our Facebook event and it looks like there's about seven hundred and fifty people interested in Community Day, so I think it's gonna be amazing. Um, that being said, our vendors are actually getting bigger. Um, we've had at least ten vendors come after the due date to try to see if they could come this year. Unfortunately, because of the space that I've had and rentals and things like that, um, they are still utilizing our Fall Fest to come. Um, but we will have to take a look at next year to see where we're gonna be able to put all of these people, which is great, um, that we're expanding, that everybody wants to come, but, um, so if anybody could come out Saturday, it'd be really great. I hope to see you guys all there and then Sunday will be our pickleball tournament. Um, we're sold out as well on that. Um, we have sixteen teams um participating in a double, double elimination um with a loser's bracket and we do have a new pickleball uh next that was just put in by Public Works. That's all I have to report, right?
And I see, as you said, working on
Speaking sessions, I'm cool? Very well, yes, I'm getting a, I'm getting a lot of good feedback from that and they're they're great to work with.
Any other questions?
Thank you, again. Yep.
Thank you, Stone. Public Works, Ms. Safer.
I have received some feedback concerning my speech patterns being unnatural to people and therefore it is hard to follow me. Therefore, under the Americans for Disabilities Act, I will conduct this report in written form. And if the assistant manager would pass that to the um to manager, thank you. Okay, point number one. We have trash cans on Brownsville Road that are sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce, which were, are cleaned out by the Brentwood Public Works Department twice a week. I would like to see this happen in our parks where we would have suitable trash cans that would be stationary and would have indeed functional lids. Second point, Prospect Park, this is something that I've been talking about for a good many meetings and here we are talking about it again because, because in the public works budget, we have uh uh maintenance and repairs for a hundred K. The things that need maintenance at uh the
Did I mean a rough, you said a hundred K?
I'm sorry, uh, ten K, yeah, that that's, that's part of it, thank you. So, um, there is the, the concession stand needs to be painted and the fascia board may need to be replaced. There is a seesaw in the park that has been removed and now there are stump brackets that are situated there. Back in January, I had asked uh the public works superintendent to to go ahead and paint it uh whenever it was convenient to alleviate any tripping hazards that the brackets themselves may cause. However, um, uh, this was not uh at all done. Furthermore, I have made multiple requests to the borough manager of of this matter and it has not yet taken place. This is just such a simple, no-cost sort of thing, I I don't know why it's not done. Okay, um, it is difficult and if not impossible to replace the lamps in the ball field due to deprecated materials. These light poles could be retrofitted with more modern lighting materials. A citizen actually did approach me about joining the Public Works Board uh if we can ever have a public works meeting, which I have invited him to attend.
Christian, what do you mean by joining the Public Works Board?
Because oh, I I wanted to ha- to assemble a public works board
Well, there's a committee, there's a
uh or add uh members uh from the citizens to this committee.
To create a public works board?
Uh, to create a public works board or to extend the public works board to commit, community members. This gentleman is a retired lighting engineer.
Well, I'm just saying, in particular, there is no public works board at all.
There is no public
Yeah, exactly.
So you have to be a Christian, you can be not expanding it, this would be a creation that you're proposing.
Yes, exactly, and this is something that I've been trying to propose in the Public Works Committee. Uh, should it find it, uh, this committee appropriate to meet. And the next meeting would be the um, as our calendar dictates, on the the twenty-seventh. Okay, um, and the, this lighting engineer would like to donate his time to make sure that these poles could be retrofitted for more morning lighting materials and it is a function of Public Works to go ahead and maintain such things once a public, uh, once the materials uh that are appropriate could be found. Okay, great. Um, and I I call your attention to a a map that I have attached on page two of um, uh, the uh Greater um Prospect Park area and we have in highlight of, from highlight of, from the county, it is the exact, um, parcel plot land that belongs to Whitehall Borough. And I have sought for your attention the northwest corner, which has become a dump for Public Works. This is not something that has happened overnight, it's happened over generations of time where we have evidence, if you look over the hill from the basketball court, that you have everything from painted cinder blocks to, to tires. Uh, I am not quite sure exactly how this came about, but it, it definitely gives, um, a bad look in the back uh, and it definitely distracts from the efforts that Mr. Mayor and the Environmental Committee and the Democratic Committee had made last Earth Day regarding i- its cleanup. Very disappointing. Okay, um, so because there, there are all, all of these issues that I keep bringing up concerning Prospect Park and its maintenance thereof, can the Borough Manager direct the Public Works Superintendent to put these things on a calendar and report back to the, the Borough Council as to when these issues would be addressed? Because it's been a year that I have called these things to your attention, that the others have called this to your attention, Ms. Wurts. Uh, through different citizen requests, through, um, citizens who've called in. There are people with the Baseball Association that have been in contact with you, uh, for quite some time. When can we see some action?
How did you say about the baseball, you, this came up, you brought up that you were talking for GBWAA about their issues.
Of course.
Right, wasn't that in the June meeting?
This was, um, it was the June fifth meeting, because on June sixth, I sent an email to, email to Mr. Seifert outlining the items that Ms. Eicher had brought up at the previous evening's council meeting. And his response was, Mrs. Eicher, one hundred percent does not have our permission to be speaking on behalf of the organization. She attended our monthly meeting last Thursday, which is intended for families, coaches, and players of the association. I did ask him if he was requesting the concession stand at Prospect Park to be painted. And he said to call it a low priority, it's giving it too much priority. It's just not something on their radar, radar. I did say if that's something they would like done, I'm happy to, to accommodate that throughout Public Works.
And that I do not believe to be true.
Well, it's right there.
Um, as far as the seesaw, uh, we've been aware of that, uh, the, it is a stump. Um, that project was put in by an organization called TDS, uh, via a grant that the organization no longer exists. So we have made repeated attempts to be playground manufacturer, um, in order to get a part numbers, so we can order an appropriate replacement. Um, we have thus far had no luck on that. Um, as far as the tripping hazard, we'll certainly take a look, um, at what is remaining there and if it needs to be removed in its entirety. While we try to get in touch with this organization, we can certainly do that. Um, point number three, as far as the lights, the borough does not own those. Um, that was a grant that actually the Baldwin Whitehall, I'm writing South Baldwin Whitehall Association, a few Baldwin, a few athletic
Baldwin Whitehall, I thought, so BWAA is
But I think it's the one that pre, predated that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the one that had the exclusive right to that.
Correct.
It was the BWAA and then there was the Greater
Baldwin, which exists now.
Broadway, which is now, and they merged into
Correct, so the BWAA was the organization that applied for grant funding, um, and they had those installed. They pay for those, they own and maintain that, not the borough. Um, and then as far as the dump, it, it, it hasn't become a dump, it's been the dump for as long as I'm aware of. I, I don't know if anyone here has a specific date, but it, it's always been a borough dump.
Plans for the responses?
Yeah, I'd like to see, if, if we can't get the part on that seesaw, that would be great, we could just
Yes.
Is it removable?
It, I haven't looked, I haven't been out there myself to look at it, I will call up the carrots and see.
I can't remember what it looks like.
But we've been aware of it, like I said, it was put in with a grant, um, I believe something the mayor had tried to install it.
Yeah.
In that organization, they're longer, we don't have any information on who the manufacturer was. We've been doing our best guess, trying to match it up, um, but we haven't had luck thus far.
Well, thank you. Okay, uh, I, I have additional points. Um, the, the Public Works does maintain the Whitehall pool, there's five thousand dollars allocated to that as discussed in, in my report, uh, last meeting, that a commercial grade shower curtain rods would, uh, would be desired by a specific resident, but, uh, as we discussed, they could not be re-installed until after the pool season was over. Now, I had heard a contrary report that, uh, there were Public Works, uh, labors that showed up on the twenty-fifth but were told by the direction of Ms. Wurts to not conduct work.
That's false, the work, the, the issue with the shower curtains just came to my attention in the past few weeks. And as I replied to that resident and I've stated publicly, we're aware of it, we will install permanent structures once the pool season is over.
You said that at the last meeting.
Correct. Okay, point four, a, a citizen had contacted the assistant manager regarding, um, McKee Drive and complained about the conditions of Baptist and Grove Road and there was, um, some discussion about how the, this, uh, would be a state road and therefore a state concern. And I, it was my impression that it was due to the ongoing, uh, utility work that was done by that department. And I, I do remember seeing a very excellent rundown on things from you, um, Chief Pivore. Were you able to get in touch with that citizen regarding the, those roadway complaints?
The citizen did not email me directly.
Yes. Um
Oh, we did take care of the road road. He, he did, oh, no, Scott did. You're talking about the puffiness?
Yeah, yes, uh, I was wondering if anyone had, um, taken the liberty to fore Chief Pivore's response to the council back to the citizen? Yes, I did know. Fantastic, thank you. Okay, um, and my point five is now moved because it's my understanding that what we are going to do with, uh, the asphalt swell is wait for there to be some e- engineering, um, review about what, uh, could be done and what should be done about, uh, the, this matter and to, to be hopefully prepared, uh, for the, the next meeting.
And I would assume too that that, um, if you know this, this word, that that asphalt isn't hot asphalt. If anybody we know, that'd be a cold patch generally is what?
No, it'd be hot asphalt.
It would be hot asphalt.
Warm mixed asphalt.
Oh, or which one are you talking about? The one that would be waiting for to pour or the one that
Yeah, it was just the
No, it's smaller that.
Yes, smaller.
For, for potholes, um, the biggest thing is when, after winter, we generally get, uh, calls from residents about their driveway curb cuts. We keep a running list when we have the time and the hot asphalt, we go and knock those out for residents.
I understand your point, uh, I'm going to see the distance, um, so that would be the cold patch.
That would be cold patch.
The material that goes into the swell.
Yeah, that would be hot, yeah, sorry, yeah, I, I was very clear, yeah, the, on the, yeah.
These aren't large orders of asphalt, because they're meant for small jobs, so it's hot, but it's, let's say, hot for long.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you for clarifying because it's, um, uh, was, um, very, very small amounts in which we do budget, uh, ten K a year for, for such material. All right, now, point number six, we have, um, a swell and the asphalt work to, to be done by Public Works. There, uh, what I surmount the whole situation to be, um, as to why things had to, to blow up the way they did under citizens' comments today, is that there was a very lack of understanding regarding what precisely is to be done, even be on, on, among the, um, the, this council members. Heck, maybe I didn't fully understand it, but I, I did visit the property
Yes, well
since the, um, the clearing was, uh, to be done. Now, we met last time on July seventeenth and Ms. Wurts said that on July eighteenth that she would discuss this with the superintendent during their annual business meeting. And, um, what, I can gather what was actually done, actually done is some weed work was done on July twenty-fourth, that's a five whole business days
July twenty-third.
Uh, since then and, um, the, the weed did not clear the, um, the large vegetation blocking the swell and it did not extend past the fence that divides Nineteen West Club Drive and, uh, Forty-Nine Twenty-Nine Curry Road. This is, as, um, a citizen commented, a, a natural gully that has existed for the fifty years that she's lived there and perhaps even longer, considering that I had, um, presented some maps, uh, of historical value, um, last council meeting as closing out the meeting. That the, this is perhaps a historical landmark that, given that it is at the location where there, there was, um, the, the railroad for, for Whitehall, for the original name of Whitehall to, to be had.
Well, that's Lynn.
So, that concludes my report.
Good, thank you, and, uh, next we have a public safety.
Thank you, Madam President, first of all, I, I want to vocalize my support for Mrs. Wurts, I think she's doing a fabulous job, we would like to have. Over, um, over two hundred and fifty households have signed up for the non-solicitation list managed by the police department. Residents can request to be added to the list by visiting the police section of the Borough website. And I think that's it, Chief, anything else?
Great.
The meeting was good, you got something out of the meeting?
I would like to give you a public thank you. My neighbor passed away very suddenly at home, his daughter was with him. I happened to notice, because I was cleaning and looked out the window, cleaning a window, that the ambulance was there, there was siren. A clue. But there were two police cars there and she came over the next day and she said, how wonderful those two police officers were. She has a son who has a handicap and he was in the shower when they came, but they stood there, not telling him he couldn't go in the room, not keeping him out. She said, but they just stood in such a professional manner that he didn't realize anything had happened or what was going on. So, please, I don't know who they were, I think it was last Tuesday, but, uh, do thank them, they did a the family felt they did a wonderful job.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
Well, Kathy, you're up for administrative services.
I have nothing under administrative services. I do have one thing under parks, I was wondering how Highlands was coming on.
Uh, Mr. Furman heard back from their attorney this morning, they had some comments, um, so we hoping for the home stretch of signing it?
Yeah, and then, this is the first, they first got back to me today.
Yeah, it's been a bit of a delay on there and their attorney was out of country for a bit, um, but we're staying on top of it. Once it's signed, uh, if you bring it signed, I'm gonna ask for a timeline of when they intend to install that. Their goal was before school, we don't know when their, when their starts, um, so we end up August like everyone else, um, but that's the latest.
Well, the delay was on their part.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Fine, okay, I was going to
Okay, anything else, Kathy?
No.
All right, thank you. Um, new business.
Uh, I do have one, um, two matters of new business that, uh, I would like, uh, to have, be noted for in vocalized response as to whether or not we, we shall meet for the August twenty-seventh Public Works public meeting.
Do you have an agenda?
My agenda is to either discuss the formation of a board once we see who would be interested in being involved or adding, uh, citizens to this committee because we have
No, but the committee is
Committee is
Committee can only be
Okay, well, then it has to be a formation of a board then.
So that's a council decision, right?
Yes, I mean, if we were to do a a board, I don't know what a board would do.
I don't know, I'm curious, what, 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 what?
What, what's your intent for a board?
What, what do they do?
What would they do, but, uh, it buys matters of, um, the, the Public Works for, um, with various matters of engineering and, uh, other expertise.
We do have our engineers repaid and our public works, it's very successful.
Yes, this is to supplement it.
I really don't know what that would, uh, evolve, right?
I think, so, I, I think we're missing a point in what committee meetings are. Uh, a committee meeting was set, I've, I've been on board fourteen years, we've never had a Public Works meeting ever, uh, committee meeting. But the purpose of the committee meeting is to discuss an issue that a resident might raise regarding a safety issue, uh, whatever the case may be, and then it goes to the head of that department and then they organize the meeting. But there is, Tristan said, there has to be an agenda, has to be a reason to meet, not because this is something you want. This has to be a reason that, that is good for the borough. And, uh, we've done it, for example, with nine-one-one. When the fire department felt that urgency to switch over to nine-one-one, that went to public safety, we discussed that. The committee came back with their recommendation to the rest of the council, we voted on it.
Well, yeah.
That's how committee meetings work.
Yes, so, uh, I have, uh, a, a, yet another citizen approaching me saying that they want to, to be involved with advising Public Works.
Here's the thing. The community doesn't And I've been on longer than, than Bill. With local government, typically the body decides what the agenda is and then it's turned over to a committee. So let's use your Public Works Board as an example. If the majority of council doesn't want a Public Works Board, you've wasted Bill's time and Tristan's time in having a meeting about it. It, it, you know, it's, it works in, you, you need to work it this way. The seven members of, a majority of the seven members of council decide, hey, we think we need a Public Works Board. Then it gets turned over to your committee to flesh out the details. But until the majority, majority of the seven decide, there's no purpose in having a committee. Bill's right, I mean, when, the, the reason we had a public safety meeting on, you know, when, uh, we were deciding how the fire company should be dispatched, uh, it was turned over to public safety to flesh out the details and then make a recommendation to council as a body. But, uh, no one individual council person has the right to set the agenda. Council has the right, a majority of council has the right to set the agenda. And then if, if council is setting the agenda
The Borough Manager apparently has more power than any of us combined and she doesn't even live here.
No, that's not true.
Because you have been able to put things on the agenda with almost less than twenty-four hours' notice such as the, these Public Works vehicles and it, it's completely inconscionable how you continue to disrespect me, how you continue to not include me in anything of, of the Public Works material where I am supposed to, I, I do, I did not until you got
Because like, how many times have you asked Public Works
Did you say anything?
For any update on Public Works? Because I've heard, how many, how many times have you asked for any update on Public Works? Let's start with that.
I, I have asked, I, I have asked at every single council meeting, I've asked at every single council meeting.
I've not heard that. I've not heard you say, what's an update on Public Works?
Be- because, because, because citizens have been approaching me due to the fact that Ms. Wurts has consistently not been responsive to citizen requests.
No, that's not, you know what, we're gonna move on.
Absolutely, positively not, no.
I want to adjourn.
I, I would
By your attitude
Uh, I, yes.
At this meeting, you are taking personal
You're, you're out of line, I can, an executive session.
You're out of line.
I call it an executive session for matters personnel.
For what? For matters personnel? Okay, before we do that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in honor of Faustina Dunkhorst. Faustina passed away at the age of ninety-three on July thirtieth. Faustina was a proud veteran, having served the United States Air Force. He earned his bachelor's degree in chemical engineering at New Mexico Western University. And then at the University of Pittsburgh, he earned his master's and doctorate degree in engineering.
And in two thousand
I got a bunch stuck here. Faustina's accomplishments are impressive and at length, that as brilliant and hardworking as Faustina was in his chosen field, Faustina's passion was serving Whitehall Borough through the Whitehall Public Library, on its library board, as a library trustee, and as an officer of the Friends of the Whitehall Library. Two thousand and four, Faustina was awarded trustee of the year from the Allegheny County Library Association. In two thousand and eleven, Faustina was recognized by then Congressman Tim Murphy and the Congress of the United States for recognition by Whitehall Borough as Citizen of the Year. And in two thousand and twelve, Faustina was awarded the Citizen of the Year Award for the Pennsylvania Citizens for Better Libraries. Faustina will be greatly missed by his family and friends, and, uh, by Whitehall Borough, who benefited greatly from his decades of service, so this is in Faustina's honor. Okay, so another person to, uh, second, person may be second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.